Good evening, Azusa Community Students, Staff and Parents. Welcome to our Board of Education meeting. We are an item. I would like to call this meeting to order on Tuesday, June 11th, 2024, at 5:33 PM. Moving on to item 1.2, roll call. What member vote?
Here.
What member Ariane is will be here shortly. What member agree?
Here.
What member Benavides?
Here.
And I am present. Moving on to item 1.3, approval of the agenda, can I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by what member vote? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by what member Benavides? Any discussion? See none, please place your vote. Motion passes for zero. Moving on to 2.1, public comment on closed session agenda items. Hope do we have any blue cards? Many do we have anyone hand raising in Zoom?
We have no hand raising Zoom.
Thank you. We will not be moving on to closed session. Our open session will begin at 7:00 PM. Thank you. Good evening, this is the community students, parents, staff and welcome to our Board of Education meeting. We are moving to item 4.1. Will Emily Chung please come to the from Victor Hodge will be saying the Pledge of Allegiance? Can you please go to the podium? Emily? It's right there where Miss Natasha's at.
My name is Emily. My name is Emily Chung. From home. Please stand for the flags. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you, Emily. You did a beautiful job. Moving on to item 5.0, reports and action of closed session matter. There is no, there is nothing to report. Moving on to 6.1, recognition of Azusa High School art students. Mrs. Perdomo? Mr. Brody will be coming on her behalf.
This team board, faculty, parents and students. We're coming together on this board meeting to acknowledge three art students that have placed in our congressional art contest and I wanted to say a few words about them. So we have Angelina Gonzalez, Adi Gonzalez and Giselle Garcia. Can, can you join me? Angelina Gonzalez has this first piece over here. How beautiful, if nothing more. Oh, no, 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 you're, you're going to stay with us. I'm sorry. Angelina received first place in the congressional art contest. She also is going to have her original piece, this is a copy of her piece, sitting in the Congresswoman's office for a year in Washington DC. Next week, she's being flown to Washington to be honored along with all of the other congressional art contest winners. And so if we could just give a round of applause. Adi Gonzalez has these two pieces, which are a portrait of young Hillary Clinton and a study of David. We have honorable mention. And I believe this was honorable mention and judges' choice award. And yourself? Giselle has this piece over here, which is called Breakdown and it received honorable mention. Just a few facts about the contest that I think are important for everyone to understand. This is our third year running on winning the congressional art contest. Angelina and Adi also placed last year as congressional contest participants. And we have placed for the last eight years in the congressional art contest. In this year's congressional art contest for our Congresswoman, we had 103 entries from 10 different schools. And we placed four out of the 11 with the top honor and, and judges' choice award. So these women should be commended for their amazing artwork. All three of them also finished and submitted AP portfolios and have been amazing contributors to our art shows over the years. So thank you ladies and congratulations. And while we're waiting, I just want to acknowledge that these three students, young artists, are an example of what this district has done over the last eight years in the arts programs. And they continue to make amazing, amazing art because of the opportunities afforded through this district's programs.
The Azusa Unified School District Certificate of Recognition is proudly proud to present Angelina Gonzalez for demonstrating excellent artistic skill and placing first in the 2024 Congressional Art Competition.
Do any of my colleagues have any comments?
Yeah, I think we're going to take.
You can read in one of your time.
Right now? Okay.
Did my colleagues have any comments? What member agree?
I mean, just, just once again, I mean, we, we're, we're here and just, just amazed by the incredible talent and, and abilities of our students. And so congratulations, ladies, for just your, your hard work and kudos to, to, to you and, and the ways that you've developed your, your, your craft, your art and, and kudos to just our, our art program and, and I'm just, I'm just in awe and, and, and just so, so proud of you all.
What member Benavides, you have any comments?
Yes, ladies, I just want to say congratulations to all of you. I'm so proud of you. I know the board is too and cabinet. It just shines your artistic talent, just shines in the work that's displayed here tonight. And to be recognized and your art work to be placed at the Capitol, what a great honor that is. So congratulations to all of you and keep, keep Azusa on the map. Thank you for all the work you do.
What member vote?
Artists, congratulations on your amazing achievements this year and for all of your years as a, as a Azusa Unified Student. I hope that the younger students looking up to you can see themselves in you and in your work. And we are proud of all of you today and in the years to come for your future. So congratulations.
What member Benavides? I mean, Ariane is.
Well, ladies, you guys are creators. Literally, I draw stick figures. I could not do what you do. So thank you for sharing your talent, your creation and what was in here. That way we see what you see. And for us to be able to be in the top, what four? You said?
Four of the, of the 11 places with.
Four, four out of 11 speaks volume of our arts department. So not, not only, you know, for the students, like we're very, very, but the teachers too. You guys are all one, you know, one entry. Thank you for guiding them, parents. If, if you're in the crowd, thank you for allowing your student to be creative and for allowing them to express themselves. Because I think that that's where the creation starts. And in Azusa, you know, what we say, A to Z in the USA. So thank you guys for, again, like with my colleagues, what they say, putting us on the map. Because without you, there's no Azusa. Thank you.
Along with these ladies, but I just want to say also that they are a reflection of their teacher, Mrs. Perdomo and all of the hard work that she has put into guiding these young artists as well. So thank you to Mrs. Perdomo.
I also wanted to congratulate the students, the winners of Azusa High School. Also teachers Terry Perdomo and Mr. Brody. Azusa Unified School District always wins the Great Napaletano Award. They always come in first or second, but they always win. And I was not surprised when I seen the, the list of the winners. So congratulations, young ladies and to your teachers also. Can we go to the middle? Now you could give your certificates.
Now you can get.
Now we're going to be moving on to item 6.2, recognition of the 4C Lab. Ms. Weeby, I turn it over to you.
Are we still on? Yeah. Good evening, Board President, Ms. Yolanda Peña, Superintendent Ortega, members of the board and cabinet. I am excited to be here tonight to highlight the healing, creative, powerful work that has been happening at Gladstone Middle School and Azusa High School through our partnership with Marissa Herrera and the 4C Lab. 4C Lab is an arts organization centered around the four Cs to create, communicate, collaborate and community. They create safe spaces for young people to share their stories through artistic expression. Research shows that creative youth development programs are most effective when they center the lives of young people within the curriculum that promotes healing, social emotional wellness and opportunities for community advocacy. 4C Labs programs have been proven to improve participants' mental health, self-confidence and social thriving. So I'm sure you can see how this perfectly aligns with our community school's vision here in Azusa. Building community, empowering and lifting up all voices, providing extended learning opportunities and integrated supports for our students, engaging with families and community partners, all while deeply believing that our greatest asset in this community is the people, our students, our parents, our staff and our community members. This year, 4C Lab provided a youth summit, Share Your Voice for students at Gladstone Middle School, as well as 10-week creative residencies at Gladstone and Azusa High. 4C Lab pedagogy always starts with a story. So I'm going to start with a story tonight. I was invited to attend one of the sessions at Gladstone Middle School when the Grammy Award-winning singer-songwriter Raul Pacheco from the group Asmatli came as the teaching artist for that day. To set the stage, they meet in this totally cool art room at Gladstone. And the group of students included students with disabilities, English learners, international students who have just recently come to the US. And they were grabbing snacks and water, joining the circle, participating in a fun, interactive opening activity. There were smiles and laughter and it was clear to me that a safe place in which students felt comfortable to be themselves had already been created here. Then they all sat down in a circle and Raul started by saying, look right here. Look in the middle of this space. There's nothing here. But when we leave today, there's going to be something. We're going to create something together. He then went around the circle and looked directly at each student. Hey, what's your name? How are you feeling today, Jose? What's going on with you? Like what's happening in your life? As the students shared, phrases and words were written down on a chart. And by the time they left that day, as Raul played his guitar, they were standing and singing the song, "I Have Hope", that they had just written straight from their own life experiences. Don't worry, I'm not going to sing it for you, but I am going to redo the lyrics. Happiness is hard to find, like a golden egg that shines in the gloomy sky. I want freedom from my problems. I want to fly. I want to stand up with courage. And this is why I have hope. I have confidence. I have freedom to fight for what I think is right. I'm not peaceful when I'm overthinking. I'm overwhelmed. I want clarity. I want the sun to shine with a nice little breeze. Tell me if you mind. I have hope. I have confidence. I have freedom to fight for what I think is right. Upon completing the 4C Lab Creative Residency, the youth surveyed expressed the following. 78% of them feel more confident. 78% said that they feel they're becoming a strong leader. 89% said they can express themselves through art. 100% said that they feel more connected to their fellow students. 100% shared that they learned more about themselves. And 89% said that they feel more connected to their community. When students were asked what they like about 4C Lab, some of the comments were how I get to be myself and not be ashamed for it. I learned how to speak up for myself. I didn't used to like reading, but now that we're writing more poetry in 4C Lab, I actually like reading now. So we are so thankful for our partnership with 4C Lab. Please join me in honoring Melissa Herrera and 4C Lab for their incredible work with our students here in Azusa. Thank you. As a lifelong resident of Azusa and proud product of the Azusa Unified School District, bringing 4C Lab to our youth is a full circle moment for me. I took the stage for the very first time at the age of three, dancing to Ballet Poque Florico's La Negra on the stage at Victor Hodge in the school talent show where my mom Rosie Herrera was an instructional aide before she became a credential teacher and served the youth of Azusa for 45 years. It was because of the support of my mother, my AUSD teachers and other mentors in our community who cultivated my creativity, my leadership and my vision in the belief that the arts have power and sharing our authentic stories for our communities is valuable. My career has taken me around the nation and around the world. But what has brought me the most joy is coming home to witness the powerful transformation of the young creative visionaries in our program in Azusa. Finding their own creative voices, developing their leadership skills, building community, learning tools to support their mental health and self-expression. In our youth summit, we have participants share what, what was one thing that they learned about themselves. And a student simply wrote, "I learned that I matter." And for me, that is why 4C Lab exists. Although we have finished our 2023, 2024 school year program, this is just the beginning. We look forward to deepening our partnership with Azusa Unified and our community partners and to provide no cost, multidisciplinary, out-of-school quality arts education for our youth in Azusa because they matter. I want to thank the Canyon City Foundation for their generous support in helping us bring our 4C Lab programming to our community. I always believe that if you see it, you can be it. And it is so important for me to be here in our community as a hometown homegirl and so proud to represent Azusa because our kids deserve to see people that look like them. Not only being leaders in the creative economy and out in the world, but they don't have to leave Azusa to fulfill their creative dreams and to be able to give back. They can be proud to be lifelong Azusa residents, just like me. Art creates hope and with hope, anything is possible. Thank you for all your support.
Marissa, it's so wonderful to see you again here after many, many years ago. I'm proud on behalf of the Board of Education to present to you the certificate of recognition presented to 4C Lab for their work creating community, building competence and encouraging artistic expression in Azusa High School and Gladstone Middle School students given June 11th, 2024, signed by Superintendent Ortega and Board President Rodriguez Peña. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Do my colleagues have any comments? What member Ariane is?
Yes, welcome home. Yes, it is so great to see you, Marissa, giving back to our community. That shows a true testament that Azusa Unified again, A to Z in the USA. You say you traveled the world, you've traveled the nations. And for you to come back and give back to our students like really touches my heart. Because we both were in high school together and coming back and giving back to the community brings joy to my heart. And I can share that with you, how you just spoke so passionately about giving back to our students. Because to give that opportunity to our students that we've had going outside of Azusa and then, you know, being, I, I've actually never left, but you know, working outside. But bringing that is so powerful. So I thank you for choosing to come back home.
Thank you.
What member agree?
Just, Marissa, so, so grateful for you. The, the love that you and your family have had for this community, including me and my family, is just endless. And just so grateful and excited to, to be able to celebrate with you what, what the 2024 version of your care and, and love for this community looks like. Because I, 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 I don't, I don't know that I've ever seen you not giving, not giving of yourself and sharing of yourself and being just a model for our community. And so just, just so grateful to, to be able to celebrate you, so grateful to be able to call you a friend, so, so grateful just for all that you are and, and, and continue to do for our, for our city. So just thank you so much.
Thank you.
What member Benavides?
Marissa, you know, we've met a short time ago, but, um, and I met your family. I was fortunate enough to meet your family as well, your dad and your sisters. But one of the things that really stood out to me is the love that you have for the community of Azusa. And more importantly, the love that you have for our students. And I was able to attend a couple of your events and everything that was read that the students were saying, I, I witnessed that and it was powerful because to me, that really made an impact, the fact that they can be themselves and they do have a voice. So thank you for embracing Azusa, our students. And we hope that the partnership with your organization continues and just grows. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
So Marissa, I've known her since she was in high school through her mom Rosie. She'd bring her around everywhere she, we, she went. But I want to thank you for choosing Azusa Unified School District. I know that the Canyon City Foundation gave you some funds and you could have gone anywhere, but you, you picked Azusa. Because it was extra special that your mom and your aunt went to Azusa schools and so did you. So your creative program at Gladstone High School, I did go to the home is where the heart is. It was so beautiful to see the students really being themselves and they're singing, they're dancing and having a good time and expressing themselves. So I want to thank you and I'm so proud to see you, how you, I see your Facebook, you're every, you are everywhere. But I'm so proud of you. We love you, Marissa.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
My colleagues come to the middle and we'll take a picture with them.
Thank you.
And we're moving on to item 6.3, presentation of Manager of the Year 2023-24. Mr. Romio, turn it over to you.
Thank you, Board President Rodriguez Peña, Board of Education members, cabinet, staff and guests. I have the honor of starting the formal recognition of our Manager of the Year. Our managers include site and district administrators, coordinators, this directors, assistant directors and confidential employees. And their work spans the entire district. But one quality unifies them all. That quality is leadership. The Manager of the Year has become a beacon of recognition for those who go above and beyond and demonstrate vision, compassion and unwavering commitment to excellence for AUSD. This year's nominees are a remarkable group of individuals whose leadership has had a profound impact on the district and our students. Before we delve into the nice program, I want to take a moment to acknowledge the incredible effort it takes to be a leader. It's about making tough decisions, fostering collaboration and inspiring others to fulfill their potential. It's about service, dedication and a relentless pursuit of a greater good for our students. Board of Education and guests, I'm happy to report that we have an outstanding type of, team of leaders who comprise our management team. Picking just one person to represent the manager, the District Manager of the Year was an extremely difficult task. In a moment, you will hear about the finalists for the Manager of the Year. They all possess the qualities of leaders that I just discussed. Before I turn it over to our cabinet members, I want you to know that this type of leadership just doesn't happen. This type of leadership is modeled over time. It's cultivated and cared for and ultimately it becomes a part of our culture. These values are certainly demonstrated by our Managers of the Year finalists. Our finalists represent principals, administrators. Our finalists represent principals, administrators in the Educational Services Department, and administrators and managers in the Business and Human Resources Department. And now I'll turn it over to Mr. Ortega, our superintendent, to introduce the Manager of the Year from our principals.
Thank you, Mr. Romillo. Board of Education, I'm so thrilled to be celebrating Horacio Trejo tonight, principal of Valleydale Elementary School, as the Manager of the Year in the Principals category. As Mr. Romillo alluded to, this award recognizes outstanding leadership voted by their manager and leader peers, and there's no one more deserving. Mr. Trejo has truly invested in Valleydale students, in Valleydale parents, staff, and community. His leadership on student achievement has been instrumental in student growth, as evidenced by internal district assessments and external components of Valleydale's California dashboard. Horacio, his key ingredient to success, I have seen him in action. He is incredibly supportive. He is always encouraging professional development and capacity building, not only for himself, but for others. He has a genuine care about him, about not just the student achievement, but the well-being of his students, his parents, his staff, and his community. I remember when the district had to deliver bad news to Valleydale, that Adriana Garcia Medina was no longer going to be their principal. And I got really bad looks from some of the staff, who are in the audience right now. But, but the joy and excitement that the announcement of Horacio, that he was going to be there at Valleydale, was palpable. It was real, and that excitement is for a reason. Horacio has been that excitement. He cultivates that excitement, and he lives that excitement about what he does at Valleydale, day in and day out. So as you can tell by his cheering squad tonight, that includes family members and colleagues and Valleydale staff, congratulations, Mr. Trejo. We are so lucky, not only to have you leading Valleydale, but the larger contributions that you have to the district. Congratulations.
It is with great pleasure and profound gratitude that I get the pleasure of recognizing and celebrating the contributions of Dr. Krista Fairley. She has her own cheering squad, too. They know her well there. Dr. Fairley is a visionary leader, whose work has been instrumental in shaping our dual-language immersion program. Her innovative approach has not only enhanced the educational experience for our multilingual students, but has also set a benchmark for excellence in language education. Through her tireless dedication and forward-thinking strategies, she has created a dynamic and inclusive environment where our students thrive academically and culturally, implementing our bilingual and bili literacy pathway awards, where language and culture are not only recognized but celebrated. Her leadership is always focused on gratitude and commitment to Azusa Unified. Krista understands the unique challenges and opportunities that come with multilingual education, as well as categorical programs. She approaches her work with a compassionate and thoughtful perspective. She has been a constant source of support and guidance to our site leadership, ensuring that our programs are not only effective, but also compliant and impactful. Under her leadership, our categorical work has flourished with a clear focus on student achievement. Krista has designed and implemented initiatives that address the diverse needs of our students, fostering an environment where every child has the opportunity to succeed. Her unwavering commitment to excellence has been a driving force behind our categorical and multilingual programs. We are deeply appreciative of Krista's leadership, which is always grounded in gratitude, innovation, empathy, and a relentless pursuit on educational equity. She has built strong partnerships with site leaders, empowering them to implement best practices and achievement-focused outcomes. Her work has had transformative impact, and we're fortunate to have her at the helm of our multilingual and categorical programs and part of our Ed Services team. Krista, your dedication to Ed Services and your visionary leadership are truly commendable. I want to extend our heartfelt thanks for your commitment and exceptional contributions. Your work has made a profound difference in the lives of our students, staff, and families, and we are incredibly grateful for your continued leadership and guidance. Congratulations.
And now I have the distinct pleasure of being able to announce our District Manager of the Year, who we sent on an early vacation, but is with us right now. Our District Manager of the Year is Angelica Juárez. She's on the screen. And if I could have our superintendent, Mr. Ortega, say a few words.
Thank you, Mr. Romillo. I'm so excited to recognize Lica Juárez on being named the Azusa Unified School District Manager of the Year. This recognition truly signifies outstanding leadership in the district, and Lica absolutely deserves this recognition. Under Lica's leadership, in a cycle of continuous improvement, our AUSD Communications has seen incredible growth and success over the course of the last couple of years. And I don't say that just to say that. Our social media metrics point to a high level of engagement across our platforms. Our communications during good times and emergency times has improved, and we have positive feedback from community members about this. Some of our news has been featured, not only citywide or district-wide, but also at the county level, at the state level, and nationwide as well. Lica fosters a collaborative environment, a creative environment, constantly supporting sites and departments with a can-do, excuse me, with a can-do attitude. This year, Lica received a Memorial Scholarship from the California School Public Relations Association, better known as CALSPRA, to cover registration, flights, and hotel accommodations for this year's conference. Lica not only positively impacts our district, but she also sets a high standard for communication across the board. And in a cycle of continuous improvement, she is reflective. She's open to dialogue and feedback, and she is vigilant about learning. As we continue to ensure that our AUSD story is told, we depend on Lica's expertise and contributions. Congratulations, Lica. Your leadership and hard work are truly appreciated, and I'm excited to see how your innovative approach keeps our district at the forefront of communication excellence. Thank you.
Before I welcome Lica to say a couple of words, we do have some friends and partners here to present Lica with a couple of awards. So if I could have Rica Prado from Foothill Credit Union come up.
Good evening, Board President, Board members, cabinet, as well as attendees here tonight. It is an honor to represent Foothill Credit Union as a longstanding partner of Azusa Unified. We are just so excited to be here and honor Lica for this wonderful recognition of accomplishments that she is well-deserved to receive. As a new representative for Foothill here with Azusa Unified, I can tell you that I've already had some interactions with Lica. Although they've been brief, they're very, it's been very impactful. My experience of her has been very professional. Anytime that I've reached out to her, she's so quick to respond. And her, along with everyone, the staff as well as administration, has been just so welcoming. So it is not a surprise that she is receiving this award tonight. So on behalf of Foothill Credit Union, I am very honored to present her with this lovely certificate of recognition, and more importantly, a hundred-dollar check. So I wish you have it on vacation, but I'll be waiting for you when you get back. But congratulations on this very well-deserved achievement, and congratulations.
And now I have the honor of presenting on Shauna Curligan's behalf from Schools First. And if you know Shauna, she's really excited, really loud. That isn't me, but I'm gonna try. So congratulations, Lica. All right, because I know that she's watching on YouTube. So on behalf of our friends from Schools First, Schools First would also like to give you what I think is a gift certificate, and I'll leave it on your desk, that you could open it up. But we do appreciate our friends from Schools First, who have, and also for Foothill Credit Union, who have been longstanding partners of the district and always, always show up to welcome and congratulate our honorees. So congratulations, Lica. This will be waiting for you at your desk alongside our plaque that we have for you that will memorialize this achievement. And now I'd like to turn it over to Lica to say a few words.
Can you guys hear me okay? Get a thumbs up, Patrick. Yeah. Good evening, Board of Education, Superintendent, Cabinet, and colleagues. I'd like to start by expressing my sincere thanks to my colleagues and the committee for selecting me for this honor. We truly have a dream team of administrators in this district, and I know it was not an easy decision to make. I am joined online today by friends and some of my family members, including my parents, Sam and Celinda Waters. I get my hustle from my parents. Both of my parents worked hard, folding down multiple jobs to provide for my brothers and me. They taught us to have the discipline and perseverance to meet our goals. When people ask me what I do for a living, and I say that I'm the Director of Communications for a school district, the next question that almost always comes is, what is that like, or what does that entail? And most of the time, I just smile, because while I do all of the media relations, advertising, social media, et cetera, that are part of a communications position, I also sometimes convince my colleagues to put on a mascot costume and play giant Jenga in the park with kids. Sometimes I'm blinging out a bus for a parade or talking to the police at 2:00 a.m. to assist a student in need. Sometimes I'm the bearer of amazing news, and sometimes I'm the bearer of heartbreaking news. Sometimes I'm running from school site to school site to photograph classes and events, and sometimes I'm asking my boss if I can tape a picture of his face on an elf to play an office-wide game of Elf on a Shelf. I never take for granted the trust that is placed in me as the Director of Communications. Trust to know that when I ask my colleagues to play Jenga in the park dressed as a lion, it is because in our advertising, we say we value community participation. When I'm hiding the boss elf around the office, it is because in our staff emails, we say we promote a positive work environment. I don't mind running from plastic class or standing outside in the sun to watch catapults and rockets launch, because I know those photos and videos are going to show the hands-on, rigorous, and engaging academics we advertise. Communications and advertising are more than just putting words on paper, are knowing which photo to capture. It is more than knowing what to say, when, and how to say it. It is about building trust in your brand by living and demonstrating your values and creating a culture that demonstrates what you put on paper and what you show in the media. As a district, I always want us to be who and what we say we are, and I'm incredibly thankful to be among colleagues who strive for the same thing. I want to thank our team of principals for partnering in our communications efforts at the site level with their website updates, social media posts, and something awesome submissions. I know that sometimes I say more no's than yeses, but I appreciate their trust, patience, and partnership in our communications efforts. I am thankful to my fellow directors for putting up with my crazy ideas and going along with them, even when it takes time away from their weekends or money away from their budgets. And lastly, I couldn't do what I do without the superintendent's office team. Arturo, Hope, and Gus are a small but mighty team. Together, we accomplish many amazing things. They are people that I know I can count on in a heartbeat. So once again, I'd like to thank you for selecting me for this honor, and congratulations to my colleagues, Horacio and Krista.
Thank you, Lica. That was very nice. And now I'd like to turn it over to Board President Rodriguez Peña to invite the Board of Education to offer comments.
What member, Greer?
I just want to say to each of the managers that are being, that's being recognized tonight, when I think about kind of my comings and goings throughout the community and some of the comments that I received, to me, it's no surprise that the three of you are being recognized tonight, because I can think right now of just examples of comments and commendations that have been made in regards to the work that you do. And so I guess I just want you to know, people are talking about you, like, behind your backs. But it's incredibly great things that I hear, and just so grateful for you and for the hard work that you do, now the ways that you lead, and it shows. And especially, Lica, to you, congratulations. It's just quite an honor, and when I think about, when I think about the, just the progress that we've made as a district and just what we as a community can expect to hear, to see, even the quality of it all from Azusa Unified School District, there is a direct correlation to the growth in that area. And we can mark it back to when you began and when you started working here. And so, just so grateful for you and for your work. And so, I don't want to take any more time, because you're on vacation. Cheers and congratulations to you.
What member, Benavides?
Yes, I just want to say congratulations to all three of you, and congratulations, Lica. And I'm going to echo what Board Member Greer said. I remember first coming on board, all I heard was nothing but good comments about you. So he's right, they were talking about you. And it was like, who's this? Who's this? You know, show me who they are. I would ask Board Member Peña, show me who they are, you know? So, but more importantly, it's all the text messages that we get from the superintendent. Literally, like every day, Azusa is winning some kind of an award, or there's a grant that was approved, or, you know, we're going to be in the paper, and it's all good news, right? And it overshadows all the negative, you know, little comments you hear that are minor, really. But it's because of the incredible work that you do and the team here, the teachers and the staff, the principals, everyone. Everyone deserves recognition, but there's a moment to shine for yourselves, and today is your day. So congratulations, and thank you for all the work you do.
What member, Bo?
To each of you, Ms. Juárez, Dr. Fairley, and Mr. Trejo, I echo my colleague's sentiments that each, the work that you do has touched my family and my daughter's education in some way, shape, or form. And all I can say is you make it look so easy, that you've really set the standard for excellence in our district, and we know that it's not easy, but you make it look so easy, and for that, we congratulate you and we appreciate you today and every day.
What member, Rodrianis?
Congratulations, Krista Fairley, Dr. Krista Fairley, and Horacio Trejo. Congratulations, Krista Fairley, Dr. Dr. Krista Fairley and Horacio Trejo. When I, actually I've known Horacio for a while when he was at Murray, I believe, back in the day. And Krista, first day I met her, full of sunshine and a lot of smiles. And Angelica, I remember meeting you and then seeing you at an event in Monrovia. And, right? And I'm like, oh my gosh, she knows everybody. And, and it was great to see, you know, that, to see you out there and for you to be so involved. And one of the things that my colleagues have said is that we are now, now, and I say now, because before it was more of the bad news in the sense that, you know, I have friends in LA, I have friends in New York saying, hey, you're on the news. I mean, I wasn't in the news. Azusa Unified was in the news, you know, and that to me speaks, speaks volume. Because as we are being put in the map, we are recognizing our children, our students. And that is why we're all here. And, you know, the administrators, all of you, the directors, you see your work through your fruit. And I, I appreciate that. It's not just word, people are talking about you, which they're saying good things, right? But it's your, your work, the fruit of your labor. And you're just not walking, you're just not talking the talking, but you're walking the walking. I don't know if that makes sense. But congratulations to all. And Angelica, congratulations on being the District Administrator of the Year. Have a great time.
And I myself also would like to echo my colleagues, but Mr. Trejo, I know that when, when Ms. Garcia Medina left, you know, they were sad, but then when they knew he was coming, then they got happy again, real quick. Like, oh, good, it's him. You know, and I always see him on the campus when I go to his campus, you know, he's always here to find me and see where I'm at or what I'm doing. I don't know, he's watching me or I'm watching him. But I saw him the other day, he was picking up trash, the little stick, and here he comes. Oh, hi, I don't know. But he, he's really good for that school. The kids love him, the, the community, the, the parents, his PTA is very strong and they work very well together. Also, Christie, when I first met her, Ms. Farley, she right away, very friendly, very outgoing. I didn't know she spoke Spanish, right? So look at you say anything wrong, but she speaks beautiful Spanish. And also her, also when she's with the community school, she's very involved and she does a very good job at it. And with Lika, wow, Lika, I know Lika since she was at APU. If you remember, with the air balloon, eighth grade, right? Whatever you, I forgot what they, yeah. Always sneak me a T-shirt. I'm like, I need to, okay, here, go your lunch. But Lika, you know, when she came to Azusa Unified School District, she was very shy. She was very, you know, she came to do her job, but you know what? She does a fabulous job. The flyers are beautiful, the color is beautiful, the signs are beautiful. You know, and she, you can tell that she does her work from her heart. She wants to be sure it looks good. She wants to be sure the colors are right. And I, because they were so drab, I used to tell her. And now they're beautiful. Also during this last graduation, I doubled the kids. She was out there at Gladstone Middle School and she was out there at Azusa High School, there in the zone, the little high heels. I'm like, I don't know how she's doing it because my shoes are killing me. But she stands there and she does her job well. So it's very well deserved. I'm not surprised that she is the Manager of the Year 2324. And congratulations, Lika. Love the good work.
Now can I have the board come up and take a picture with our honorees? We could take the picture. Yeah, if you go this way, if you go this way, we'll hopefully be able to have the. All right.
That is the best time of our board meetings. So we recognize beautiful people, right? So now I'm moving on to item 7.1, public comments on agenda or non-agenda items. The Board of Education encourages public input. Board members are not permitted to respond to public comments. A member of the staff will contact you if the information is needed. Individual participants in public comment must adhere to the following guidelines. Speaker cards must be turned into the board secretary or raise their hand while in Zoom attendance by 7:10 or 10 minutes after the meeting begins. No speakers may yield their time to another individual speaker. Speakers must be present when their name is called in order to be heard. Maximum speaking time is three minutes. Thank you for your participation. Hopefully we have any blue cards. Manny, do we have any hands raised on Zoom?
There are no hands raised.
Thank you. So then we're moving on to item 8.1, comments and reports by request by the Board of Education. What member Bo?
Thank you. I do not have any comments tonight.
What member Adianis?
I just want to say to the, to the teachers and to the students out there that school's out for the summer and they're feeling it. So hope you guys have a great, great summer. Remember, we're coming back in August, so enjoy the sun, enjoy the time off and come back all refreshed. And wish, you know, the staff that is here in the summer, thank you for being here and keeping us going. And I hope you take some time off for yourself again, so we can start the new school year in August, refreshed and ready to go. Thank you.
What member Grue?
No comments this evening.
And what member Benavides?
Yes, I just want to say congratulations to all the students who graduated. This year, I attended several ceremonies and different events. And it's always nice to see all the students' hard work, you know, and the students get recognized for what they do. So congratulations to the students, to their teachers, to the staff for all the hard work. Another year, another milestone. So congratulations.
And I'd like to report that I went to the Azusa High. Well, first of all, I went to many of the chorus, the orchestra, the string concert, the mariachis. And I just wanted to say that all of our students are so talented, singing, dancing, the orchestra, playing the piano. I am so impressed with all of our students. We have many musicians in our Azusa Unified School District. I went to the Canyon City Classic Community Festival, the 5K walk or run, but I walked it. It was great seeing the community come together. Azusa Unified School District also participated. Victor Hotch Kruger, he was having so much fun taking photos with all the community members. Assistant, Assistant Mr. Onquio was there with job postings and Community Schools was there, food service did a great job. And yes, what member Greer, chicken wings are good. That's what I had. Azusa High School Gladstone Park Ceremony. Thank you Superintendent Artega and Cabinet Secretary Hope Valdez. The media, Lika Juarez, for all you do, doing that beautiful ceremony all organized on both schools. And of course, the presentation and the appetizers are delicious from the Food Service Department. Murray School Career Day, they had a mini career day where they had photographers, DJs, paramedic, Azusa PD with this canine dog, St. Just College, students are visiting. Um, you know, I'm used to seeing the high school students visiting different booths. And these are student, younger students, elementary. And they were having a great time talking to, well, of course, they liked the best. What? The canine dog, she was beautiful, Haley. They were visiting her and they had the paramedics there and they were wrapping bandage in their head and all this stuff. But they had a great time. And I think that was good to bring it to the elementary level. The Education Foundation, I want to thank everyone for our successful event. And I want to thank all the donors and anyone that gave money and raffle prizes. And our money is used for scholarships or super teachers mini grants. And this is how we continue to stay strong and to contribute money to Azusa Unified School District. Thank you. Now we're moving on to 9.1, comments and report by superintendent and cabinet.
Thank you, Board President. First and foremost, congratulations to our students that were recognized tonight. That means that for three consecutive years in Washington DC, Azusa Unified School District students is, is, is being displayed. And so that's, that's a huge accomplishment. Thank you to the partnership with 4C Labs. Have heard an amazing feedback loop on, on what they, they brought for, for our students. I want to thank the city of Azusa for once again bringing with us on the senior lawn signs that started during COVID and that has continued. So I want to say thank you to the city. I want to thank the staffs of Gladstone Middle School, Sierra High School and Azusa High School for really well put together graduations and promotions, of course, to the graduating class of 2024 and the promoting class of 2024. I do want to give a special shout out to the Ed Services Department, the Business Services Department and the Communications Department for helping put those events together. And then lastly, just want to congratulate and thank Krista and her work with Project To Inspire, which is a, a class that is provided to student, I'm sorry, to, and some staff members on how to grow leadership at the ground level. And so just why I was able to attend the commencement ceremony, we have a graduate on the dais actually. And just again, to see the investment that we're, we're trying to get all levels from parent involvement to parent engagement, all the way to empowerment and leadership. And so just want to say congratulations to the graduates and thank you for, to Krista for bringing, for bringing that to, to our district.
Good evening. I just want to extend a congratulations to all of our graduates and promoters, all the way from preschool to our adult ed. It's always such a full circle moment to, to be part of all of those year-end celebrations. Tomorrow, we kick off our summer programs in AUSD. So hope some of you enjoyed a couple of days off. And those of you that will be joining us, we'll see you all tomorrow. And also a reminder, we have our partnership with the city of Azusa and we have free swimming lessons for our Azusa Unified students.
Good evening. I would like to use this time to thank all of the Managers of the Year. Appreciate their hard work dedication. I would also like to thank our maintenance and operation team as they've been continuing to work hard near groups of blitz to improve and enhance our facilities as we get ready to achieve our goal for our Williams inspection of a goal of 95% or greater. I want to continue to thank Nutrition Services for their partnership, their feeding their community over the summer, for summer feeding, as well as continue to feed our students during summer school. I also want to thank our risk management team as they're preparing and getting us ready for our open enrollment. Remind everyone, open enrollment for medical benefits is open now all the way through August. I know we're just now getting ready for the summer, but I do want to welcome everyone back for the new school year for our welcome back event is August 20th. So mark your calendars and come enjoy a meal with us.
And good evening. I also want to congratulate our Managers of the Year. It really is a fun event for me and I really want to thank the Board of Education for making it a priority to continuously recognize our employees. I think it matters a lot to, to all of us. I also want to congratulate our graduates and really thank our, our teams who made our ceremonies special. And they were beautiful. They were well organized. And it takes a team of dedicated employees and, 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 and everybody coming together to make it a very special event. Since our last meeting, I did participate in the Azusa Community Festival. I really, really enjoyed it. I was, I thought it was really helpful that the 10K ended right where our tables were at and made for a lot of folks coming and saying hello. And I had got an opportunity to interact with educators who live in our community that travel very far away that we got to hopefully move into our district. So hopefully that, that has resulted in some, some, some new employees coming to our district. And the following Saturday, I also participated in the Laco Job Fair. It was the first important job fair that they've had since pandemic. And it was extremely well attended and it helped connect us with some candidates that we actually have hired already. And with that, I want to report to the Board of Education that we have hired two of our DLI teachers. And so we have them sign their, their contracts. So I'm very happy to report that news to the Board of Education. I also want to let the Board of Education know that our partnership with the, with APU through the Branch Alliance for Diversity, Educational Diversity, better known as Branch Ed, that is coming to an end at the conclusion of this school year. But I'm happy to report that one of the significant outcomes of that event was the inception of the Future Teachers of America Club at Azusa High School. It was extremely well attended and those meetings have had over 40 students attend. So the future looks very bright for us in a lot of different ways and, and also this particular way with regards to our teachers and our teacher pipeline. And then lastly, I also want to report that we held our interviews for the Gladstone Middle School and Azusa High School Assistant Principal vacancies that we had. We had those interviews yesterday. So we look forward to being able to move further into the next round later this week. Thank you.
And I just want to just piggyback on one thing on the 5K. You know, when people during the race, they did stop right at Azusa Unified. I think they thought that food was for them. And they were eating all the little hamburgers and all the, that's why only got a chicken wing because they stopped. They're like, oh, this is food. And they said, right, Mr. Onquio? Thank you. So we're moving on to item 10.1, approval of the consent agenda. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve 10.1.
Motion by Board Member Adianis. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Grue. Any discussion? Seeing none. Colleagues, please place your vote. Motion passes 5-0. Moving on to item 12.1, public hearing of Azusa Unified School District 2024 to 2027 Proposal Local Control and Accountability Plan. Colleagues can have a motion to open the public hearing. Public hearing opened by Board Member Grue. Second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Adianis. Colleagues, please place your vote.
Motion passes 5-0. The public hearing is now open at 8:07. Do we have anyone wishes to speak, to make a public comment on this agenda item? Seeing none. The public hearing is now closed at 8:08. Moving on to item 12.2, Presentation of Azusa Unified School District 2024 to 2027 Proposal Local Control and Accountability Plan. Ms. Garcia Medina, I turn it over to you. You're ready there.
I'm ready for you. Good evening, Board President Rodriguez Pena. Board Members, Superintendent. Good evening, Board President Rovilla España, Board Members, Superintendent Ortega, Cabinet Members, Attendees online and here in person. I'm excited to be here with you this evening. Such a wonderful evening today. I'll take the opportunity to share with you our twenty twenty four through twenty twenty seven. Proposed local control and accountability plan. This will be year one of our three year plan. This plan allows our school district to spend supplemental and concentration funds that we receive from the state. Today, we're going to focus on an overview of this proposed LCAP. And we just finished that first, one of the required steps in the LCAP process, which was the public hearing that was just completed before starting this presentation. Today, we're going to take a look at various components within the LCAP, including the actual components of the LCAP, the process that we use to to develop this plan, as well as some highlights and some next steps. Here you'll see the different components within the LCAP. I'll talk about the first section, which is the LCFF budget overview for parents. And this is a summary of the budget for our proposed twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five school year. And it's divided by funding source. So within this section of the LCAP, you're going to see our projected LCFF revenue for the upcoming school year. You're also going to see projected expenditures for this coming school year, as well as current expenditures for the twenty three, twenty four school year. There's also a section called Increase and Improve Services that highlights students with high needs and how we address the needs of EL students, low income and foster students. You have the LCAP document, which is a very intense and and long document. This was available for public viewing here at the the district office this past week, as well as it's been attached to today's board agenda item for the public to be able to give input on. The next section within the LCAP is the annual update. This section outlines the progress that we made towards our current LCAP. There's a goal analysis section that goes through each of the goals. It explains any material differences within the actions and services, as well as it evaluates the effectiveness of the actions that we had in our current LCAP. And it also includes any proposed changes if we felt that any of the items were ineffective, how we're going to adjust those in the upcoming three year plan. The third section within the LCAP is the plan summary. And this summary starts off by giving you a general description of our district, the students, our school sites. And it also recognizes any successes that we've identified, any identified needs and also some highlights. So some of the areas that you'll see highlighted in terms of successes are increased student achievement, increased college and career readiness, as well as increased achievement for English language acquisition for ELs. Some of the areas of need that we've identified is a need for targeted interventions specifically for EL students, foster youth and homeless, as well as making sure that we're bridging the gap for college and career readiness for our English learner students, as well as students with disabilities. And we also recognize that there's a perception of safety that has declined and a student's sense of connectedness. And so we we understand that that's an area that we need to continue to to build upon. And we're, you know, very thankful to have the partnership and the implementation of community schools. So we we hope to see that continue in in this next plan. The next slide shows you a section that's called comprehensive support and improvement, also sometimes referred to as CSI. And this section identifies schools that are qualified for CSI under the Every Student Succeeds Act that was passed in twenty fifteen. It also outlines the process that we went through to engage educational partners in developing CSI plans for our school sites. And we do have two schools identified in the district as CSI schools, and that's Azusa High School and Sierra High School. The next component is the educational partner engagement. As we heard earlier, we do value engagement of our of our families within our schools and our district. Some of the opportunities that we've had to engage our parents include our parent advisory committee plus meetings. This year, we had five full day meetings where we worked through the development of the LCAP along with looking at survey data to develop next steps in this upcoming plan. We had four full day student advisory meetings where they too get had an opportunity to give us input. We conducted our annual district survey as another means to gather input. We've had some board study sessions where we've had opportunities to to hear input from the board as well as from the public. We've had presentations, mid-year presentations, both at at the district level and at our school sites. And we've engaged with the support of Dr. Fairley with our district English learner advisory committee to engage in the LCAP engagement process as well. The next section is the actual twenty three, sorry, twenty twenty four through twenty twenty seven LCAP. Here you're going to see each of the goals and their associated actions. We have six goals. And within the goals, we have fifty actions. In the next few slides, I'll be able to share each of the goals with you in summary and then and I'll be able to show you the sixth goal, which is is something new for our district. The next section, section seven, is the Increase and Improve Services section. In this section, we have to identify how we're directly servicing foster youth, English learners and low income students. Here you're going to see a description of each action that's called a contributing action. We're also going to see that we have to identify what needs these subgroups have and how the actions are going to support these needs. Once we've identified those two areas, we need to identify a metric for us to be able to measure progress towards achieving whatever it is that action was striving to achieve for our subgroups. Some examples of actions that are targeted towards English learners, low income or foster students include restorative justice supports at our school sites, academic counseling for college and career preparedness, training for our staff on trauma informed practices, intervention programs, mentors, tutors, differentiated instruction for English learners, just to name a few. Then the last section within the LCAP is the action tables. And here's where you get to see all the funding in a table form. It summarizes any planned expenditures for the school year. And it also includes our Increase and Improve Services contributing action tables. Okay, as we've developed the LCAP, we've taken on the continuous cycle of improvement. We're seeking to improve our actions and services for our student. We want to make sure that we're addressing any equities for student subgroups in terms of support and outcomes. And through this implementation process, we've indicated our progress through our mid-year updates and through our year one metric outcomes. We've engaged our educational partners with opportunities to develop not only an understanding of the LCAP, but also to give us input and to help us as we're drafting the plan. Some of the highlights in this proposed three year plan, you'll notice that there are six goals. Our metrics are aligned to equitable practices, so we want to make sure that we're reflecting progress on all our student subgroups. We want to ensure that we're maintaining our successes, that we're, for example, creating opportunities to meet college and career readiness for our students, that we're supporting social emotional wellness, that we're enhancing opportunities as we saw earlier today for students to actually actually access visual and performing arts. And so we want to make sure that we're continuing to support those areas of success for our district. And then the the next thing is focusing on clarity. Based on feedback from our PAC plus and student advisory meetings, we've reimagined our goals. We wanted to make sure that we're enhancing clarity. We rewrote the goals through many meetings. We went through many reiterations to ensure that when parents and students read the goals, they can understand the goals and they can identify what the clear focus is on each of the of the goals proposed. Our plan also includes differentiation specifically for our EL students, low income and foster youth students. And those supports are both academic as well as emotional supports. The next slide, you'll recognize this shows you goal one through five. Here's a summary of of the goals. The first goal ensures growth of student achievement. The second goal is focused on meeting the needs of our EL students, making sure that we're accelerating their achievement and their English language proficiency. The third goal is focused on preparing our students for college and post-secondary opportunities. And the fourth goal improves the engagement of our families at our sites and our district. And our fifth goal is centered around creating safe and restorative school climates. The sixth goal you don't see on this slide, but we'll go over it in the next few slides. And it's our new equity multiplier goal, which we will review in the next few slides. Here you see local control funding formula equity multiplier. An equity multiplier funding provides additional funding to high need schools where we need to close the achievement gap and opportunity gap for our students. There's two criterias that a school needs to meet in order to receive this equity multiplier funding. They need to have a non-stability rate of above twenty five percent. And they need to be socio-economically disadvantaged with the rate above seventy percent. So as you can see here in this slide, Sierra High School meets both of those criteria. Their non-stability rate is at thirty six percent and the socio-economically disadvantaged rate is at ninety two point nine percent. The next slide shows you the areas of that Sierra scored the lowest performance level on the California dashboard. And so we need to ensure that through this goal, through goal six, that the actions and services must improve these areas. So for Sierra, we're looking at suspension rate and improving that. ELA and math performance, as well as college and career readiness indicators. Another requirement of the equity multiplier funding is to ensure that not only are we addressing those areas or those indicators on the California dashboard, that we're also addressing the specific subgroups that scored the lowest performance level. So on the left hand side, you see the indicators that I mentioned in the previous slide, English language arts, math suspension and college and career ready indicator. And so we need to make sure that the goal six addresses all students for those indicators. Socioeconomically disadvantaged students has to address all those areas as well as Hispanic students. And then for English learners and students with disabilities, we have to address the suspension rate. So when we write the goal, we need to call out those specific subgroups. Okay. The next slide is actually goal six. And this is the equity multiplier goal. This goal was written a little different than our other goals. It's it's a smart goal. It's specific, it's measurable, attainable, relevant and time bound. So by specific, you see the indicators and the subgroups within the goal. By measurable, we have CASP assessment, suspension rate, the CCI indicator that we'll use to measure our progress. Attainable, it's aligned to our LCAP metrics. It's relevant, it's aligned based on identified needs and it's also aligned with LCAP goals and it's time bound, right? So this is our our goal for the next three years. So we hope to achieve this by June twenty twenty seven. This next slide shows you the LCAP process. Today, in accordance with state law and the directives of the Los Angeles County Superintendent of Schools, a public hearing for the LCAP had to take place prior to approval. As community members, educational partners, there have been multiple opportunities to receive input on the LCAP plan through PAC plus, student advisory, public board meetings, study sessions and D-LAC meetings. We've also partnered with the LA County Department of Education through the LCAP pre-review process. So they've looked at our LCAP plan. They've given us feedback and they've made recommendations and based on those recommendations, we've done, we've done revisions to the LCAP. So they've given us their green light to present to the board today. And also the LCAP document, as I mentioned earlier, is attached to the board agenda item. So if anybody would like to review it, they have the ability to do that. On June thirteenth, the plan will be up for board adoption, followed by submission honor before June thirtieth to Laco for final approval. That's the LCAP plan in a nutshell, a short condensed version of of the actual plan itself. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to take those.
Any questions? Board Member Gru?
Just a couple of questions in regards to would be on page elevens, the eleventh slide. Where it lists goal six. You had indicated and I see that that this is a classified as a smart goal and I so I see the different metrics that are here. If if this is saying that by June twenty twenty seven that we're looking to hit these benchmarks and we we see this as attainable. Would it be possible for us to work in house, even if it, I understand it may not be submitted as part of our our formal LCAP? But would it be possible for us to in-house set some annual benchmarks? So that we can kind of see what what could be achievable by the end of of next year and the subsequent year? So that as we are reviewing this, we can see, are we on track or are we not on track? That that's something I think would be very would be helpful to see. And then the second piece, second question I have is in regards to suspension rates. I certainly would want to see us to decrease that. And I see that here listed specifically in a way that I I guess a concern I have is suspension sometime or there's oftentimes suspension can be can be overutilized. And and at the same time, want to ensure that there there is recourse, that there that there is that there are steps that can be taken and and even even with restorative practices in mind, but that that do give options, like I said, recourse to to our educators and 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 school sites. Whereas it's not just so so as to not increase our suspension rates, let's just not 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 suspend and ignore and sweep under under the rug, but instead, how how might we actually address it through through some additionally creative ways? And I and I've already seen some of the incredible work that that we've done. Steps we've taken to address this, but but I I guess I just want to say that out loud. My hope is that we don't just not address things so that it doesn't impact our our suspension rate, but that there's there's steps that we're actually taking to address concerns.
Yeah, very, very good input. Thank you so much for that. And if I can add, we do have within goal six professional development opportunities for teachers as one of the actions to enhance, you know, cultural responsive teaching practices. We also have support systems for at promise students. And so that could be counseling services, mentoring programs, partnerships with community organizations. We also have an action under goal six that is alternative discipline approaches. So you know, So you know, the school will work through through these implementation of these actions to. To address some of the items that you that you mentioned. As well as it's this, this is not only just in goal six, but it's also within our LCAP goals as well. Thank you.
Ms. Garcia Medina, also the LCAP is a three year LCAP, so to the first question in terms of in house, can we do the yearly targets?
Yeah, and that's something that we've discussed as an ed services team. Looking at the actual metrics that we have for the three years and coming up with. Like you said, benchmarks along the way to to measure progress because we are reporting every year our progress towards that those metrics. So that's something that we can definitely do internally. Any further questions?
I have a I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
During the public viewing, do you have, is this somehow? One, one question I have is do we have parents that ask about this? Do we have, do we track those numbers and then? What if we have like Spanish speaking or other language, you know, speaking parents that ask about the LCAP because. I mean, it's a very detailed, right? Structured type of program for the district, so. I was wondering if you know, maybe you can give me that information or I'm just curious to see if parents engage in the public viewing process. And then I had another question, thank you for addressing board member Gears. Questions with regard to goal six. Is this the first time Sierra High School appears on on this LCAP with or is goal six a new goal?
This is the first time our district receives equity multiplier funds. And they're specifically directed towards Sierra High School, so this is the first time. In previous LCAPs, at least in the time that I've overseen LCAP, it's been just district wide. Goals, but this is specific to Sierra. Yeah, and in terms of your first question with the engagement of parents, they do give input at at meetings. We do a lot of protocols, whether it's we're looking at it at the metrics or we're looking at survey data or we're looking at actual. Goal language and they're giving input and then we're, you know, taking that information from the different groups. So it first goes to PAC plus and then it goes to student advisory and then it goes to ELAC and then we, you know, we take that feedback and. And we revise and and take input. And that was one of the feedback that that I continuously heard in terms of the language, right? If you think about the previous LCAP and how lengthy our goals were. And they had so many components that it was hard to really identify what's the focus for this specific goal because it had. A lot of a lot of content and so one of the the. The meetings that we held, we spent a whole day trying to make the language. User friendly, understandable and and clear and we kept asking ourselves, is it clear and what is it missing?
I know that you have the advisory committee, right, and some of the parents are there. Are those parents, there's new parents selected every year or how does that process work?
We offer the opportunity right when we come back in August to all parents. And we send out a Google form for parents to show interest. And then based on those responses, I make sure that every school site has at least one representative. And then we look at the different subgroups, right? So we want to make sure that we have representation for English learner families, for students with disabilities. So at schools where I get multiple responses, I'm able to fill some of those other groups so that way we ensure that everyone's voice is heard. And then this year I have a lot of parents who want to return, so I'm excited to have. You know, a base of of parents who understand the process and can partner with with new parents to continue the work.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Good. Yeah, I want to thank you for the great presentation and I do know that our students that do get suspended, that we do have protocol where we do. Counseling with the parents and there's a process, but I appreciate that because hopefully we don't get. Students to return, right? And and the question is when when they're suspended, the the most important question is why? Whatever the situation is and how how we can help them. And I know that we have been working very hard and working with the students and the parents and that's what it takes is us to work with the parents and the students together. And on the suspension rate and and yeah, that's true, what remember Greer, I I think that that's a great idea, we do yearly. So we know we're doing better or you know, have we reached that goal and we may reach it even sooner than you don't have to wait till. Twenty twenty seven, right, it could be sooner than that. But I think by looking at it, we'll see how close we are and. Maybe we'll meet in before. This date here, hopefully, and I know we will, but we did a really good job and I appreciate all of you for all your hard work, this is this is great, thank you. Okay, now we're moving on to item thirteen point one, presentation update of surplus properties, Mr. Ortega.
Thank you, Board President. As we have made a commitment to the community and to the Board of Education that every board meeting. We're going to have a update of our surplus property timeline. Since our last board meeting. There are two items in our timeline. That we want to provide an update on. The first one is that the RFPs were indeed released on Monday, May thirteen. They are currently posted on our website, on our surplus property page. They are also listed on the CoStar website and the LoopNet website. Which I understand and have looked up myself. Are considered to be the real estate, commercial real estate. Websites to be on. In addition to that, DCG strategies did throw out the the RFPs to. Around three hundred entities, just to announce that these RFPs are alive and and well. Action item number two. Did launch, which is that interested parties now. Have until July fifteenth to submit their offers to DCG strategies if they are interested in that. With that being said, just like I opened up saying that there's a commitment that every board meeting. We do have a board meeting in two days. And so it would just be redundant, nothing will happen between now and then, so. I do want to announce just because we did say this, I do want to announce that at the next board meeting. We will not have an update on the surplus property, but we will have one when we return back in August.
Let you go this time.
I was gonna say, I unfortunately, I won't be here at the next board meeting, but I do think that they should receive this update again.
You know. I thought you were gonna say, I don't care because I won't be here anyways. Thank you for that. We're moving on to item fourteen point one, public hearing of Azusa Unified School District. Twenty twenty four, twenty five, proposed adoption budget and reporting of district reserves for suit to requirements of SV eight five eight. Colleagues can have a motion. To open the public hearing.
So moved.
Right, Board Member Greer, do you have a second?
Second.
Second, but Board Member Ariane is colleagues, please place your vote. Motion passes five zero. The public hearing is now open at eight thirty seven. Does, do we have anyone wishing to speak on a public comment on this agenda item? Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed at eight thirty seven. Moving on to item fourteen point two, presentation of Azusa Unified School District. Twenty twenty four, twenty five, proposed adoption budget, Ms. Jamal, I turn it over to you.
Thank you, Board President, Ms. Pina and fellow board members and members of cabinet. Tonight I will be presenting the proposed adopted budget for the twenty four, twenty five school year. So we're required to complete. The LCAP first for a proposed LCAP and then followed by the proposed budget. And then it'll be adopted in the subsequent board meeting, which will be on next Thursday. And this is governed by both ed codes, ed code four two one two seven. Now we're going to jump into our budget assumptions. So here we outline the budget assumptions that were utilized to formulate our proposed adopted budget. We are excited about the increase on proposed COLA and I will continue to use the word proposed. And projected throughout the entire presentation, so until Governor Newsom actually signs the budget. Everything we have here today is just our projections, so we are projected to receive a COLA of one point oh seven percent. There is a new increased projected COLA in twenty five, twenty six. And then the projected COLA is slated to decrease from what we previously were hoping of three point eleven to three point oh eight. Cow stirs remains flat and this is the district's contribution for all of our certificate employees. So for every dollar a certificate employee earns, the district has to contribute nineteen point ten percent of their annual, their monthly salary on a monthly basis. This is also true for our classified employees through CalPERS. Their rate for CalPERS is projected to continue to increase, so we're going from twenty seven point oh five to twenty seven sixty to twenty eight flat by twenty six, twenty seven. It is important to note that though CalStirrs is remaining flat, the district does have to account for the CalStirrs on behalf. Which is the total annual amount that if all teachers were to retire at once, we have to project that amount. Which is counted for in our expenditures and then we have an offsetting revenue amount that we have that in net, so we have no impact of our any fund balance, but it's showing. Our constituents, what is our actual true liability for our expenditures. We have our lottery funding, which is less than one percent of our total funding that we're receiving. You'll see that those numbers remain flat, the governor actually has to identify if the COLA is going to be applied. To our lottery dollars, our lottery funds that are received are set aside for instructional material or instructional related items such as textbooks. We also receive mandated block grant, the mandated block grant for K grades K through eighth as well as our. High schooler, the rates are continued to projected to increase based off of the COLA, based on current language. But the amount that we receive is. I'm not going to use the word immaterial because that's my word, but it's minimal compared to the amount that we actually spend. So for the mandated block, back in the day, we actually had to submit time sheets every time a teacher or a classified person did a mandated reporting training. Or every time we had to do any type of training that the state said we had to participate in. We will submit time sheets in addition, we get reimbursed for actual costs. They set aside with that and said, okay, we're going to come up with a number and you receive this per ADA, no matter how many employees you have. How many mandates we put on you or anything that we have to add. So this is just amount that the state allocates to us that we have in our general fund. Going over to our projected enrollment, so we're projecting that our enrollment will decrease from the current year by a hundred and eighty students. This year we certified enrollment at six, three, one, one, and we're projecting our enrollment to be six, one, thirty one. We have realized an increase in our ADA, so I know we talked before during first interim, second round previously. That our attendance was declining in the previous years and we were at a high ninety five percent. Then we dropped at a low eighty nine, we're happy to report that this year we're a little bit over ninety, so to be conservative, we're going to project out our ADA. At ninety percent for the upcoming fiscal year and the two subsequent with the goal that we're going to continue our charge with ed services and working to improve our ADA attendance rate. So before we get into our revenues and expenditures, I want to talk about some key things that are impacting Azusa and not just Azusa specifically is for all schools in the state of California. So. I was going to start talking without showing you guys the numbers, okay, so for when COVID. We are always, let me go back, we're always funded on our prior ADA, so when COVID. The last attendance that we had on the books was fiscal year eighteen nineteen. The first hold harmless that the district that the Governor Newsom gave us was we're going to fund you. For nineteen twenty, twenty twenty one and twenty one, twenty three, based off of your ADA from eighteen nineteen. So what this slide shows is that basically our ADA. For those three years actually surpassed our actual enrollment, so we were receiving more funds because of the whole harmless. Then we actually had students to generate the revenue, so that's great for us. But then the state said we cannot sustain this, so now we need to figure out a new funding formula. And so that district did not realize this massive cliff to say, nope, we're going to stop this harmless and just go back to the prior funding formula. They created what's called the three year rolling average and that's when they take your three subsequent years, create the average and that becomes your funding formula. For that upcoming subsequent fiscal year, so with that, that took in place during the twenty two, twenty three fiscal year. So based on a three year new funding formula in twenty two, twenty three, we were funded off of ADA of seven, one, ninety three point seven five. Even though our enrollment was sixty six, ninety. This year our projected funded ADA or actual funded ADA was six, seven, eighty six, again, based on a three year average. Our actual enrollment was six, three, eleven, so we're still receiving more than our actual enrollment. I mean, our actual ADA that we actually materialize. Where it's really becoming, where we're really feeling it is this year, we no longer have the whole harmless years in our three year formula. So now in twenty four, twenty five, we're actually funded off of our actual three year ADA. And so now you'll see we'll have about a drop in ADA from the prior year of twenty three, twenty four to twenty five, twenty four, twenty five. By five hundred projected ADA that we'll be losing. This chart also shows that if we weren't, we're funded, because we're funded off of this funding formula, the excess is showing. How we're being, how we're benefiting from this funding formula. We do not know after this year if the funding for the three year rolling average is going to continue. We're all waiting to find that out, so we're hoping that even if it's not the exact three year, there is another revamping of the funding formula. But if it goes back to the prior, which was funded off of your previous ADA, that means for twenty five, twenty six. Will be funded off of five thousand, six, oh, three point sixty four, which would be a significant change and a significant drop in revenue. Any questions there?
Quick, just just a quick question, you said that the three year rolling average is based off of the funded ADA or the actual ADA?
The actual ADA. All right. And now I want to spend time to talk about the impact on a COLA. So this is just to give. An example of how the COLA benefits, but at the same time, we don't because of our situation, we're declining enrollment district. We do not actually receive an increase in funding and so to make sense, we want to illustrate this here. So in twenty three, twenty four. We have our funded ADA of sixty seven, eighty six point eleven, the average per people funding ADA is ten thousand, six hundred and fifty four dollars and seventy six cents. So just going straight across for twenty four toward twenty three, twenty four, we're projected receive seven, seventy two point three million dollars. Taking that same base of ten thousand, six fifty four, seventy six. Adding the COLA, which is going to equate to a hundred and fourteen dollar increase per ADA. If we're looking at our new funded ADA based on a three year average, now our ADA is going to drop based on the funding formula. Our funded ADA for twenty four, twenty five will be six, two, seven, six point six eight. So even with the one point oh, the one point oh seven COLA, we're projected to receive sixty seven point five million dollars as a base grant. Which equates to four point seven million dollars less than we receive in the current fiscal year. It's not that we did anything wrong, it's just we're a declining enrollment district and our ADA factor. So even with the COLA, though, the average student amount goes up because we're declining enrollment, we feel that decrease. Okay? So now we are going to talk about our revenues. So here, this is looking at our full pot of our LCFF funding, so we receive our base grant, grade span supplemental dollars and concentration. So for the twenty four, twenty five fiscal year, we're projected to receive a hundred point three million dollars in LCFF total funding. This is a chart to show you how all the pots of money come, so on the base grant is about seventy million dollars. Then we have our supplemental concentration funds, which is. Then we have our supplemental concentration funds, which is what our L cap is built off of. And then we have our add-ons, which is like our TK add-on and our transportation add-on. That makes up the total pot of a projection of a hundred point three million dollars in just LCFF um, funding. Here we see our three funding sources for unrestricted revenue with LCFF being our largest funding, so a hundred point three million dollars. And then we receive state funding projected at one point two million and other local at one point five. We know in the previous years, the state funding was almost close to LCFF because we're receiving all the one-time funding. All that goes away sunshine. We still have funds remaining, but most of those have spend by dates either by next September or the subsequent fiscal year. This is showing us an illustration of a change in revenue from twenty three twenty four projected estimated actuals. To what we're proposing in our adoptive budget. So again, we're showing that our LCFF funding. Could be a reduction of five point nine and that's total LCFF, so not just the base of the four point seven that we used in the prior slide. We're showing a decrease in federal revenue. Again, that's the one-time funding that we received in the previous years. It's not projected to come in the subsequent years. Other state revenue is projected to increase by two point nine million dollars. Our local revenue is projected to decline by one point five million, what a total uh, difference. Of projected of seventeen point four million dollars in the change in revenue. Now looking at our expenditures. So we're here with our largest population of our expenditures being our certificated staff, um, followed by our classified staff and our employee um, benefits. I'm happy to note, we're finally getting closer to the average of eighty five percent of spending all of our uh, not all, but uh, eighty five percent of our expenditures going to our people. Um, before it was harder to meet that um, threshold, the average threshold, because we received so many one-time funds that not allow us to spend on people. So then we will have more contracted services, more on books and supplies um, and vice versa. So now this year we're a little, a little bit at eighty percent. Um, in the previous years, we were seventy seven and a year before that, we were at seventy uh, seventy percent. Here is good in a breakdown of our expenditures. So comparing uh, twenty three twenty four estimated actuals to our twenty five, twenty four twenty five proposed budget. We're projecting an increase of certificated um, salaries of five point five million. Um, this is a reflection of having vacancies in this current year that we're budgeting to actually um, fully um. Fulfill those positions as well as um, pity uh, border education approval. We already have budget allocation for our social work positions um, and any extra hourly positions that we have in place based off what's written in our L cap. We're also projecting an increase in classified um, salaries, again, also for positions as well as for extra hourlies. The increase in benefits is associated with our increase in the projected positions as well as the increase rate in persons stairs. I mean, for pers and also the increase in our health and welfare um, current benefits. Um, books and supplies, we have a projection of a decrease of five point four million. And that's attributed to the one-time funding that we will not project to spend in the um, upcoming um, fiscal year. We are projecting an increase in contracted services of four point one million dollars and then a decrease in capital outlay of three point eight. Capital outlay is anything over six thousand dollars. That's when we bought our HVAC equipment in the current year, not projected to make that type of investment going forward. So overall, total expenditures are projected to increase by three point two million dollars. Here we're looking at our multi-year projection. We are current that currently showing that we will meet our uh, fiscal obligation. In our current year and our subsequent year. Um, we are showing deficit spending, but we always talk about how we have a structural deficit. Um, we still have one-time funding that we're carrying over and whenever you're spending funds from the previous year, you will always show a deficit. So this is showing us that we're spending down um, some of our carryover funds. But we are showing that in order to meet our three percent reserve in twenty six twenty seven, we will have eleven point three million dollar shortfall. Previously, when we um, presented this information, we're a little close to almost fourteen million. The reason why it has decreased is one, from our budget work that we've been doing, but two, we talked about how we have a projected increase in a cola. Um, if that materializes, projected increase of cola is currently in these numbers. And so our practice is, once the governor gives us his projections, we utilize those numbers and we make adjustments if anything were to change. Um, before we um, present our first interim report, we will have a physical stability plan attached with our first interim. We're identifying how we're going to achieve the eleven point three million dollar shortfall. The next slide is showing our components of any fund balance with our three percent reserve resolving revolving funds and then our funds that we have committed. And then this is our largest any fund balance, which continues to be our restricted funds. And these are all of our grants that we have carryover like our community schools that we have um, a couple more years to spend that over. We have our ELOP grant. Uh, we have the LCFF multiplier, equity multiplier, which could only be spent on Sierra High School. Until we actually have the fully plan in place, the so, the funds will be set aside in the any fund balance. And with that is recommended, the board education receive the proposed adopt the budget for the twenty four twenty five school year.
Any questions, my colleagues? Seven, board member Greer?
Just one question regarding Calpers. So, so understand that we're continuing to see an increase in district contributions. Is there? Is, is there a, a, an expected like threshold where in which we, we don't? I mean, so I, I mean, at, at this rate, a, a few boards from now will be at a hundred percent. So is there?
That is a possibility. Um, I remember and I don't want to date myself, but I almost uh, thirteen fourteen, I think was only as seven percent. And so it went from there to double digits and each year has been going up. Um, and so there's no current reprieve. The um, the issue, um, not to go too technical, but the issue is that we have more employees who are retiring and living longer. And so they're either way. And so when they do their analysis previously, they do a lifespan of each person and we're outliving that. And so now they have to increase the rate. So that way, when the current employees actually retire, they actually have funds set aside.
Um, what member been to beat us?
I just have a quick comment with respect to that. That's happening not just at the school districts, but even with local government. So I seen it before.
Hi, Ms. Jamal. Um, in, in both the current year budget and the multi-year projection, um, is there any flexibility included? Um, for staffing, for arts, music and um, world language in terms of expanding those programs from what we currently offer?
Yes, and so we currently, um, we, I'm not going to take credit, Ms. Norma and her team. Uh, we have our arts and music where um, they'll be working hand in hand with the school sites to um, implement the arts and music plan. Um, that will incorporate um, if, if that's either people or services, instruments, vice versa. But that plan will be set aside. We have funding for that.
Are those the Prop twenty eight and the arts music block grant?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, are those going to be recurring funds or are those um, limited, limited funding years?
Prop twenty eight is currently showing um, reoccurring arts and music shows reoccurring, but it is currently. Uh, a, not assembly bill, but Senate Bill language where it may be paused depending on how the um, governor balances his budget right now. You're welcome.
What member Ariane is?
Yes, thank you for, for all this great information. Um, I think this is my fifth year and I'm like, oh, yeah. Following along it and I'm not, you know, and so it, it's making sense. One of the things that's making sense too is that um, I've, I've noticed here in our district um, each year, just like we had our, our. Our recognition today of the art um, students. Um, we have, and one of the things that my colleague just said, uh, was it a music and, and. But it had to do with, with the arts. And so one of the things are, are we looking at, and I'm looking at Ms. Norma Camacho right now. Are, are, are we um, looking at uh, possibly having like an arts academy, um, some sort like a track? That we can um, have we thought about that?
So the Prop twenty eight money is intended to give access to um, the arts for all students. Um, and it involves stakeholder input. So we have had a team um, that has developed an updated strategic arts plan. That we will be bringing to the board and presenting um, to our school sites. But the goal with a lot of the um, the direction that the state is moving in is how do we increase access to the arts? For all students. So that is, that is the goal and we're excited to, to share the strategic art plan with the board in August.
Thank you. So is that like all district, um, including middle school and in high school?
At, out from elementary from TK to high school. So um, the Prop twenty eight funds are intended to increase staffing. Um, so how are we adding staffing that will serve um, from elementary um, through high school? Um, so we have existing art teachers, music teachers, theater teachers. Um, but the Prop twenty eight is how do we add to that? So it has to be additional new people. Um, so we're excited to, to really um, develop that starting from our youngest students.
Well, I can't see, I can't wait to see what you're going to whip up, Ms. Camacho.
Well, after seeing the, uh, I was, I spoke about earlier, seeing the um, elementary school, that whole, this is a high school. Um, the gym was full of students, right? And they were all had instrument in their hand, had violins, they were singing and seeing the middle school kids and seeing the high school students. You know, they're singing, dancing, um, playing an instrument, the mariachis, we have the arts big time. So I think we're mu- using our money wisely. I can see we have a lot of talent in our district from. Chiquitos all the way to high school. Are we good? Okay, thank you. So um, we're moving on to item thirteen point, excuse me, fourteen point three. Approval agreement between Azusa Unified School District and our, our, I'm not sure if I'm saying this right. ARIK construction. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by. What memory are they honest? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by board member Greer, any discussion? See none colleagues, please place your vote. Motion passes five zero. Moving on to item fifteen point one presentation of Azusa Unified. Azusa Education, um, excuse me, presentation of Azusa Educators Association, AEA Sunshine Proposal. For the twenty twenty four twenty five fiscal year negotiations with Azusa Unified School District. Mr. Rongheal, I turn it over to you.
Thank you. Government code requires that the parts of the contract that will be up for negotiations are presented. In a uh, board meeting and that the public has an opportunity to um, speak to the um, to those element. Or to those articles that will be negotiated. So this first item is the presentation and the subsequent agenda item is the actual hearing.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to item fifteen point two, public hearing of Azusa Educators Association, AEA Sunshine Proposal. For the twenty twenty four twenty five fiscal year negotiations with Azusa Unified School District colleagues. Can I have a, a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion by board member Greer, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by board member Ariane X, Ariane is, um, colleagues, please place your vote. Motion passes five zero. The public hearing is not op- is now open at nine oh two. Do we have anyone wishing, wishes to make a public comment on this agenda item? See none, public hearing is now closed at nine oh two. Moving on to item fifteen point three, presentation of Azusa Unified School District Sunshine Proposal. For the twenty twenty four twenty five fiscal year negotiations with Azusa Educators Association, AEA, Mr. Rongheal.
Thank you, um, Board President. Similarly, this uh, the, this agenda item uh, is the district's. Um, articles in the um, with the AEA that will be open for negotiations. And similarly, um, we do need to have a public hearing. What is different is that the um, fifteen point six. Uh, requires that the Board of Education actually approve the fifteen point six, I'm sorry, fifty point five. Are the, is the uh, Board of Education has to approve the um, sunshine proposal.
Thank you. Moving on to item fifteen point four, public hearing of Azusa Unified School District Sunshine Proposal. For the twenty twenty four twenty five fiscal year negotiations with Azusa Educators Association, AEA. Colleagues can have a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion to open.
Motion by um, board member Ariane is, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by board member Greer, colleagues, please place your vote. Motion passes five zero. The public hearing is now open at nine oh four. Do we have anyone wishes to speak on a public comment on this agenda item? See none. The public hearing is now closed at nine oh four. Moving on to item fifteen point five, approval of Azusa Unified School District Extension Proposal. For the twenty twenty four twenty five fiscal year negotiations with Azusa Educators Association, AEA. Can I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by board member Greer, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by board member Ariane is, any discussion? Seeing none, public uh, colleagues, please place your vote. Motion passes five zero. Moving on to item fifteen point six, approval to establish school social working position with a job description. Can have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by board member Ariane is, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by board member Greer, any discussion?
I just want to say real quick, thank you for, for finally putting it on our agenda. We truly appreciate. I'm sure every single student in school that will is going to benefit, is going to see the reap. The reward is going to reap the rewards of our. Vote tonight.
Thank you. Call it, uh, colleagues, please place your vote. Motion passes five zero. Moving on to item sixteen point one.
Actually, we're.
Um, we will be going into closed session at this. So we're not a journey. Place your vote.
Will we be going in? Okay.